Good morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, September the 25th, 2025. It is 10:00 a.m., and this is the Josephine County Board of Commissioners meeting for our regular weekly business session. We will start this morning's meeting with an invocation, and we have David Buell here, who's going to get us started with that. And afterwards, I'd ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Pastor David Buell from Forward Operating Base, Southern Oregon. I'm here to give your invocation today. Thank you. Heavenly Father, I come to you right now, Lord Jesus. I come and I ask your blessings and your peace upon this meeting. Oh, Lord Jesus, be upon our elected officials, our government. Oh, Lord Jesus, be upon our people in this great county of Josephine. Lord, allow us, Father, to just be enminced in your Holy Spirit, Lord, and just allow us, Father, to make sound decisions and right decisions and to come together in unity under you and only you, as you are the God of gods and the King of kings. You are our Lord. In your name we pray this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Forward.
All right. We'll start with the Declaration of Potential Conflict of Interest. And if you have the agenda in front of you, you'll notice it is a pretty light agenda this morning, but I will make that call anyways. Commissioner Smith, any declarations from you?
I see no conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett?
I don't see any conflict of interest.
And thank you, and I as well see no conflict of interest. We have no administrative actions for consideration other than the consent calendar. We'll get to that later in the agenda. Next on the agenda is a request and comments from the citizens. And I know that we typically give three minutes for people to speak. Because we have a light agenda this morning, and I think it'd be good to hear from our constituents, I'm going to extend that time to five minutes. So if you choose to speak longer than you usually are accustomed to, you're welcome to do that. So with that invitation, who would like to speak first this morning? Yes, sir, right here in the second row.
Victor, Grants Pass. I wish to once again voice my outrage at this board's continued practice of forcing their unique religious beliefs in the form of Christian prayer upon the general public while in the employ of Josephine County and acting in their official capacity. This flies in the face of the Establishment's Clause, "Under which there shall be no national governmental religion." I believe there is no God, and for you to force upon me the notion that there is and that I am wrong in my belief is discriminatory action. So I demand you cease and desist in this practice. Chris, you stated last week that I come here almost every week with the same complaint, and that you get it. You get it, yet you persist, demonstrating how little you care about the feelings of others and are only interested in savving your own sores. You said, "Why can't I come just five minutes later?" Just five minutes? Firstly, it is my right to be here, and secondly, let's say hypothetically speaking, of course, you were repeatedly kicking your dog, abusing your children, or beating your spouse. Is it your position that just because I was not there to see or hear it, that my absence somehow makes it right? If so, that is an extraordinarily enlightening thing to know about your view of right and wrong. Now we know why there has been such a lack of transparency from this board. Andreas, you vehemently pushed and demanded all county offices, in order to adequately serve the public, to be open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Currently, when you come to the county commissioner's office, the blinds are drawn, shut with no call button or any indication the office is even open for business. I believe this is not in keeping with ADA requirements. As there are people who may not have a phone, who are deaf or speech impaired, what about the blind that can't see the paper on the other side of the bullet-resistant glass, installed for safety reasons several squares back? Not safe enough, I guess. Under ADA, the instructions for assistance must be in braille and accessible as well. But then that seems to be the standard of adherence to the ADA for this county and in the very building where our top leaders perform their duties. The county spent tens of thousands of dollars to construct handicap-accessible ramps that lead to the doors of this very auditorium. Yet they are locked and blocked and unusable. That says an awful lot about the state of this BCC and demonstrates who are truly blind. Don't forget to sign the recall petition, and let's get it on the ballot. We deserve better than this.
Thank you. And I just see Mr. Fitch coming in. Mr. Fitch, would you like to speak this morning? Bring it. And in case you didn't hear it, I saw you just walk in, and I want to forge you the same opportunity as everybody else. You have five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah, not just three minutes, and five minutes. And I just want to point out, I appreciate you coming this morning, and I appreciate you coming to my office last week and speaking with me. So with that, I'll give you the floor. Five minutes, sir.
I'm here to confront you about lying to the public, about calling me six times and my phone don't work. You don't get to call me after two weeks of calling to your office, calling you over and over and over.
Some interference here. Could you--
It's your phone call between me and you, saying my phone didn't work.
I will ask you to turn it off because it's disturbing the meeting? Thank you.
We'll get to it.
Thank you. Please do not turn it on again.
Don't interrupt my three and five minutes, please. I didn't interrupt you. Don't interrupt me.
I'll add time to your clock.
Thank you. You guys took an oath to the Constitution for all of us, and what you did in that courthouse is you weaponized the Constitution to protect your little group and assault this little group over here. That's a Title 18, subsection 241, 242 violation. I suggest you look it up. Organizing a group to assault, intimidate, and threaten individuals is a federal crime not alone, trespassing, intimidation, menacing, any other Oregon statutes that come along with that. You don't have a constitutional right to go assault anybody else in this county at all, and that's exactly what you did. You took an oath, and we pledge allegiance to that flag under a God. In Ryan Clark, we took to court because he was assaulting people in those businesses, and he abused a religion, the salt-shaker religion, and enforced it into our schools, our businesses, and the federal court said there's be no picketing at the courthouse, inside the courthouse, at least 500 feet. And when you preach your religion, your salt-shaker religion in here, you shove your religion down our throat and screw everybody else over. That's going to end. You're not going to be going violating anybody else's constitutional rights ever again. We are going to the Supreme Court, gentlemen, and you've got two options. Either comply with the Constitution, or the other charge is death and is treason. You cannot violate a constitutional civil right of anyone, and that's what you did in that courthouse. You will follow into compliance, or what you're telling everybody in this whole county, that we can go into that courthouse screaming and yelling and picketing and disrupting a courthouse that has an integrity of safety and public trust? And you guys blew that. I suggest you follow in compliance 100% before we head into the Supreme Court, because we're done with you guys not following the constitutional law, and that's the charge. Title 18, subsection 241, 242, deprivation of rights. Have a good day. It's sunny outside. Enjoy it.
Thank you, sir. Right here in the center aisle with the red hat.
Mike Pelpree, Josephine County. It's going to be a very tough act to follow, but I'm going to do my very best. So I want to talk a little bit about our local politics. Most people know that if you were to cut my wrist and I bled out, my blood would spell MAGA out on the sidewalk. I'm a patriot, but I'm going to let you know that we have traitors within my own party. And what I mean by that is, if you look at what Trump has done since he's come into office, he's exposed many traitors, not just in the Democrat Party, but within the Republican Party as well. We call those rhinos. There's actually one or two sitting in this particular room as we speak. What I want you to know is, within the Josephine County politics, we have what's called holicans. What is a holican? A holican is the cross between a rhino and a Democrat. Now, where does that name come from? Well, the name comes from the previous chair of the Republican Party GOP here in Grants Pass. That's the person behind the term holican. Now, why am I discussing this today? The reason I'm discussing this today is because Charlie Kirk was killed on September the 10th, and on September 11th, we had to sit back and memorialize what took place on September 11th, 2001. But on that very same day, the GOP, or I should say factions of the GOP here in Josephine County, decided to file a recall against the chair, the new chair that was duly elected as our leader of our Republican Party. Now, if I don't know about what you look at the word traitor, that's exactly what that is. That was being a traitor within our own party. Now, I'm going to continue, and we're going to talk a little bit about some of the traitors that are part of our city council, one of which is Victoria Marshall, as well as Kathleen--
Can we not do personal attacks, please? This is an opportunity for you to--
Okay, sure, 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 sure. I understand.
We're not here to talk about anybody else, and I'm glad to give you back extra time.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's just say that there are certain elected officials that work-- we worked very hard to get elected. I worked very hard to get elected, but ultimately, what they've done is they turned their back on those that elected them. In this very room, we have what we call our PCP meetings. These are precinct committee persons' meetings. These are very important and very private meetings. But most people may not be aware, but there was a video that was released recently to the Courier, and it just so happens that one of our faithful PCPs, again, I refer to that person as a holican, decided to unethically video-record this particular meeting. Now, what they did was they released this information out so that they could damage the duly-elected chair of our local party. So, you know, it was very hard for me to make the decision to come out here and have this discussion, because I'm very faithful to my party. But you know what? Just like President Trump, I'm sick of the rhinos. I'm sick of the traitors, and at this point going forward, I will be going what I call scorched earth on every traitor that I come into contact with. I will not leave one stone unturned, not one. I'll give you a prime example of exactly what traitor means. If you go past this building right here and you look at the human cages over there, that is a ton of criminals that are being held within our city on full display for our city. Here's what I want to know. What is the county? The county's buildings are right here. What has the county done about that? Not a damn thing. What has any other local leaders within our city done about it? They've done nothing. Law enforcement is a damn joke. And when I say joke, I mean it's probably the most pathetic law enforcement-- now, let me preface that with, not all of them are pathetic-- but the chief of police, he's the head of that snake over there. And I can tell you right now, what's happening over there is the most disgusting thing I've ever seen in my damn life. We won the Supreme Court case. We took it to the damn Supreme Court and won it, but yet our city leaders decided to bend over, spread their cheeks, and allow Salem to come in and hammer them even further. And now, every single day, we've got to watch-- I've got to drive down this road and look at the human ferals that live amongst us. Just this week, I believe Kate Lasky put out an article about the trouble that the library is having. I wonder what citizen has spoken about that in the past. I just wonder. I have said it several times. The library is not safe for children. Now she admits it. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? Okay, I don't see anybody. Okay, right here in the third row in the aisle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nancy Lester, Grants Pass. You knew I was going to get up and speak.
Thank you.
The library district just released its annual report, and I want to share some of the information in that report with you. In the fiscal year 2425, the library remained a vital gathering space and learning resource for residents in Josephine County. They checked out almost 300,000 physical books plus almost 62,000 electronic materials, which are eBooks and audiobooks. There are almost 26,000 active library cards. But our library is more than this, however. There were 523 children's programs delivered throughout the year with more than 21,000 attendees, a significant increase over the previous year, and a clear reflection of community interest and involvement. The 2025 Summer Reading Program, we've talked about that a lot over the last few months, engaged 883 participants, who collectively logged more than 535,000 minutes. That's over 8,900 hours of reading. Library staff hosted more than 50 events system-wide, including interactive storytimes, science, technology, engineering, art, and math crafts, the Team Bad Artist Club, Neighborhood Heroes' Story Squad, K-9 Reading Buddies-- you met the dogs this summer-- Bugs R Us, and astronomy science programs. The library coordinated a storybook walk throughout the community and partnered with local food trucks through the Food for Thought Outreach Campaign. Altogether, the library reached almost 8,700 people through these activities. The library also hosted 89 programs for adults, serving nearly 2,000 participants, though through events that promoted learning, connection, and civic engagement. One outstanding offering last spring was the Everyday Civic Series called Civic Behavior from Yesterday for Today, led by former Oregon Teacher of the Year Lois McMillan. In honor of the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, Ms. McMillan is leading a new program exploring a different topic each month related to the history and ideals of the Declaration of Independence. One of the primary sources for this program is the Yoder Lehman Institute's panel exhibit called Declaration 1776: The Big Bang of Modern Democracy, which is currently on display at the library. And as always, this is a free program, and a library card is not needed to participate. The next session is on October 2nd from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Grants Pass Library, and October 4th from 11:30 to 12:30 in the Illinois Valley Branch. It's really quite interesting, and I encourage everyone to attend. And if you can't make those sessions, to at least come by and look at the panels that are displayed in the library. Lot of great information there. Finally, and you must be as tired of hearing this as I am of saying it after 262 days, it's an unreal and unacceptable amount of time to negotiate a fairly simple, straightforward lease. Please stop stonewalling and sign the lease that the library agreed to back in July. You remember it. It's the one without the termination-for-convenience clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step down, can you remind us what the date was of that event at the library? I didn't quite catch that date.
The one at the Grants Pass Library is October 2nd, so I think that's next Thursday night from 5:30 to 6:30. And the one in the Illinois Valley Branch is on October 4th, which is a Saturday, from 11:30 to 12:30.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hunker, you got your hand up?
Recalls are not about punishing bad ideas. They're about removing those who lack the capacity to govern. They are not a demonstration of hostility. They are demonstrations of hope. They are the opportunity to secure the promise of competent leadership that will serve us all. Mr. Black's leadership is self-referential. He believes his ideas are good simply because he believes them, not because they resonate or succeed. Black, a leader who's been chosen without a populist election, mimics tyranny in miniature. His continued opaque leadership has become a barrier to community-driven solutions and a source of growing public frustration. Leadership isn't about just having an idea. It's about creating and maintaining the conditions in which good ideas can grow. When a leader cannot prevent rebellion, whether literal or metaphorical, it signals a failure in empathy, adaptability, and trust-building. Leadership is more than vision. It's about understanding the terrain, the people, and the timing. It is influence, and influence requires legitimacy earned through competence, character, and connection. Navigating internal dynamics, managing dissent, and building coalitions are not distractions. They are the job. Public unrest is a symptom. It's not a disease. Black lacks the capacity to engage the public. Instead of listening, he reacts, and everywhere perceives dissent as sabotage. He's not listening. He's not learning, and he's not leading. Signing a recall petition does not remove commissioners from office. Let me repeat that. Signing a recall petition does not remove commissioners from office. Signing starts the democratic process that then allows the public to decide whether or not those officials should be removed from power. It's time for Josephine County to choose again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spurlock, would you like to speak? And I would afford you the same opportunity as everybody else. I know you weren't able to get here on time. I'm guessing maybe you rolled out of bed. I don't know, but I'm giving everybody five minutes to speak, so I encourage you to use all five minutes if you choose to do so.
Okay. Well, I actually planned on being short today. So yes--
Your choice.
Grants Pass. So Commissioners, I'd like to start with just a few questions for you today. Some of them are really total softballs. You voted to terminate the library lease on January 6, 2025. Can you clarify if you ever gave the library written notice of the termination? It doesn't appear to have happened. The next question, does the library currently operate with a lease as of today, September 25th, 2025? Short break from library questions. I'm sure you're happy with that. The next question, how much of former Public Works Director Rob Brandis's salary came from the county general fund versus the state highway fund? So put another way, did any of his salary come from the Josephine County property taxes? In his absence, who is currently applying for grants and doing the other revenue-generating duties of the Public Works Director? Next question, can you publish Michael Sellar's current job titles with the county and what his salary has been year-to-date? And back to everybody's favorite subject, the library. So the library is mentioned three times in the entire county charter. I'd like to read every reference. So Section 14.5, entitled "Library Support," it's number one. "The board shall provide for the support and maintenance of the main library and library branches." That's all three. So, gentlemen, where is the main library? And the main-- main is doing a lot of lifting here. So this doesn't say the county library, doesn't say the library district, doesn't say anything like that. It says main library. And since I have the extra time, I'd like to bring up the Dimic property. So on April 8th of '25, this board voted to, I think, to undervalue the Dimic property. The official minutes say that, Ron, that you made the motion to cut the price by 10% and allow lease-back and owner-carry options, and Commissioner Black seconded. And Commissioner Barnett, you said that you wanted to see it listed at $3 million. The roll-call vote was 3-0 for the affirmative. From what I could find, the county still owes over $2.7 million on this property. So at a $3 million listing, we don't really gain anything, but we lose an asset forever. If insiders buy it and lease back or owner-carry, all of that benefits them, but it doesn't really benefit the county. If a nonprofit buys it, it comes off the tax rolls forever. So it's starving schools, fire, and public safety revenue. But if the people keep it, I think that the Dimic property could serve a variety of different needs, whether that be veterans' care, health and family services, seniors, childcare, or education. In fact, we don't have a true community center that's owned by the county or the city, and that could be a good use for that property. There's also the EV chargers that are there, which it's my understanding that a portion of the loan that's out on it is because of those. So it seems that those EV chargers would make the property eligible for some extra state and federal grants. But yeah, just to kind of reiterate that, so selling the Dimic property for $3 million, it's gone. We gain nothing. We just remove a debt from the books, but I think that the property could be used for some other valuable purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else going once, right here in the aisle?
David Depper, Grants Pass. Thank you for your service and for serving our county. I've heard a lot about disenfranchising voters. We've all heard that on news. Everyone says, "Well, we elected you, and we elected John West, and every time we elect, we vote for someone." Instead of democracy, we get groups set out to recall and disenfranchise our vote because they want to put someone in that will make flowers and rainbows. Thank you for being responsible with the budget, for making changes so we could hire more sheriffs, which we definitely need. Thank you for your work with the library back and forth, which isn't finished yet. Thank you. You've been doing everything you said you were going to do, and we appreciate it. But come on, America, let's respect our vote and give you guys a chance to keep going on what you've been doing. It just isn't right. I mean, I was taught you vote, and you live with your neighbor's decisions. If you get outvoted, hey, so be it. You don't plan a recall right away just because you don't like who got-- you didn't get your way, right? Thank you, and God bless you, and hope, you know, stay strong. And let the voters decide, not the recall people and all this craziness. Thank you.
Thank you. Against the back wall there.
Holly Morton, Josephine County. Well, I agree with everything that Mr. Depper just said, so I'm not going to repeat it. But I would say this, we're offered and afforded by you guys, and I thank you very much, five minutes today to come up and address you. And I just wish people would, rather than repeatedly give these withering insults, actually come up here with some ideas, say, "Hey, I've got this idea," or "That idea," or "Hey, can I come and sit down and come up-- or hey, can I come and sit down and come up with some ideas to solve the problems? That's, you know, you guys represent us in solving the problem. So breaking you down every week and screaming at you, it doesn't help the audience, and it doesn't help solve the problems, you know? It's just an exercise in futility, and we're all tired of hearing about it, frankly. So thank you for serving. With regard to the library, you know, the repeated lie that just drives me crazy is that somehow the commissioners were, you know, kind to go against the function of the library. And I don't think that's true. What I think you have been trying to do in everything that I've read is to sort it out so it's fair to the community as a whole. And my understanding is that we have a tax district for the library, a 35-cent tax district. So they do have revenue coming in, and they've amassed a $1.2 million bank account. So they do have money. It's not that the county or the citizens are saying, hey, you know, we want you to have nothing. They have money in the bank, and they could help to solve some of the problems we have with, with the costs, the growing costs in the county and the diminishing tax base that we've had over a period of time. That leaves us worried all the time. I went into the library the other day, and I was kind of impressed. There were a lot of good things going on. Not everybody in the county uses them, but enough people do. And if they're able to keep the sort of seamy materials out of the hands and children, which I think many of us are concerned about, if we can do that, I think that'll be really helpful. Provide services, computers, and that kind of thing. We don't want people sleeping in the aisles there. When I was in the other day, there were quite a few people sleeping there. Fortunately, not on the floor, but with their heads on the, on the tables resting. The library has some real value to us, but I don't see that we ever tried to, I mean, I haven't seen anything that says that they, that you guys have tried to basically kick them out of that building or anything else. I think it's just been a renegotiation of a lease. And this constant commenting about the fact that in the new lease, they should have different terms than they've had for the last two decades about how the lease could be terminated. I just can't figure out why, all of a sudden, that's a big stumbling block. They've had two decades of having that be the practice, that you have 30-day notice if one or the other party's found that things weren't working out. You'd have time to, time to get back to the table and work it out again. Why is that a huge stumbling block now? Why can't they sign off on that? You know, unless they don't plan to uphold their end of the, of the bargain. As long as they uphold their end, and they're careful about what kids are exposed to, and the library functions the way the community wants, I don't think they, they should be worried about the library going away. So anyway, enough of me. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for taking the time and for affording us the opportunity to present our ideas and thoughts.
Thank you. Right here on the north side.
Jill Pearson, Grants Pass. Well, I think that it is very important to do with the timing of that amendment, you know, suddenly saying that that amendment has to stay in the lease. I mean, none of us have any confidence in that. We want to be sure that the library is safe, and that is what we have been fighting for. And it has been like, what, a month now since we had, you know, we're going to sign the, sign the lease, and then all of a sudden, this comes up, this amendment. And it is the wrong amendment at this time. The way that you are so against the library is that we are very, very worried about the timing of that amendment and what it says. So I think that's ridiculous to say that, that it doesn't matter and should stay the same. And there are many of us who do. That's all we want. We want the lease signed with a new amendment so that we can feel that we are, it's going to happen, and it's not going to be taken away. Believe me, a lot of us think that's what will happen. So I hope that you do the right thing, okay? The recall wouldn't have happened if you just did the right thing on this one issue.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning? I see, oh, against the back wall there, sir?
Patrick Rooney, Grants Pass. I didn't have anything specific to say, guys, at all, really. I thank you guys for, the five minutes is interesting. It's a nice little bonus, I guess. I appreciate that, and I think, I guess if anything I could say, I, I hope that we can solve our differences here reasonably. We don't need to be yelling at each other, hating each other. It's not going to help anything. I'm sorry I missed the prayer this morning, a little late. My bad. But I, for one, I'm glad that you guys are doing the prayer and totally stand behind that. I don't understand the, the idea of kind of like changing history, of saying that America wasn't founded as a Christian nation. It wasn't founded with prayer. It wasn't founded with the Ten Commandments over the Supreme Court. You could look all over Washington DC and see Christianity all over it, and to deny that is just a denial of, of, of history. And one thing, I think that if we're going to be arguing with each other, and I, we all have a lot of differences with each other, we should at least stand on a few things that we can agree on or find some agreement points. My opinion, when I'm arguing with somebody or discussing with somebody, as soon as they won't admit to obvious facts, I end the argument because we're wasting everybody's time. But if I can talk to somebody who's at least willing to be reasonable about basic facts, I'm willing to talk to them. I think we should all do that right now. And speaking of the prayer, I, I think really that we should be praying for this county and for you guys up here to do your jobs and, and hopefully work with you in some kind of way. Argue with you if they need to, but just be respectful. Because I, I hope we learn something from the Charlie Kirk's death and his situation. If we demonize each other, it's going to end in violence. You can hear the temperature going up with some of the way that people are yelling in this room. Demonizing people and not looking at them as an actual human being is a sure way for us to end up in another civil war. And this could be a civil war that we are not going to get out of. I don't think anybody in their right mind wants another civil war in America. And if they do, then, you know, we, we just can't agree with that. That's crazy. It's, it's easy to call for a war until you've been in a war and see what the, what happens in a war. See the killing and the, and the injuries, and the loss of life is horrific. And once you've actually seen something like that, no sane person would, would call for or want to see that kind of situation occur. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this morning? Giving you five minutes. Okay, seeing no hands, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Smith, would you like to respond?
Just in one thing, I, I thought it was interesting, bringing ideas here. We have problems. Problems need solutions. So I'd appreciate some ideas. I hear a lot of complaints. I hear a lot of negative. But we got a, an opinion box and a comment, a comment box right outside the office there. Nobody ever does anything with that. Nobody ever puts it in. I think since I've been in office, I think I've had 10 people come to my office and talk to me. I don't think, only, only, can only think of one that came with ideas. The rest of them were complaints. So I think it's good that if you get involved in your county and in your government, but try to find the solutions for our problems. Belittling people and down-talking people and being negative, it's not going to solve our problems. What's going to solve our problem is ideas, putting our heads together as a group, as a people, as a community. We want to move forward. We want this to be more prosperous. We want to be more united. So I'm tired of the complaints. Give me some ideas. Bring your ideas. Come sit down and talk to me in my office. I'm more than open for ideas that'll solve some of our financial problems first and foremost. Our biggest problem is pro, is our economy and our prosperity. We, we just made number one in unemployment in the state. Have you noticed that? You know, when it comes with the economic downturn and poverty, it brings drugs. It brings drugs. It brings crime, and it brings violence. Have you noticed that in our community? You think maybe that has something to do with our economy? You know, since we lost timber revenues, this county's been on a downward decline. Now we're looking at the loss of possibility of, of federal grants. If you want to see a town, a town and a county in decline, wait till that happens. So bring your ideas. Bring your solutions. I, I hear the complaints. I don't, I don't care about the complaints because a lot of them are unfounded. Bring your solution. Bring some ideas. Let's be positive. How do we move forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Barnett?
Yeah, I just also want to say I hope people can have peace and not hate and get together and unify. Unify Josephine County. I, I hear the same broken record week after week and no solutions. And it's just, when do we come that we're adults? We're not kids. We're adults. And if we can come to the table to talk and reason and come to terms with things, that's what this commission is trying to do. I know that I've been in some tough situations with going outside my comfort zone, and those people know who they are. And they're like, yeah, Chris actually talked to us. Chris actually did that, and I still don't like him, but I'm still letting him talk. That's fine. And maybe some of you guys have won over, and I mean that in a good way, meaning you didn't know me. And if you get to know somebody that's, that's served his country and still continues to serve his country, you'll know what it's like to serve and to give and take and to love everybody. And that's what the service has taught me, to love everybody. Regardless of who you are, regardless of what side you're on, I could break bread with you, have a cup of coffee with you, and I'll save your life. I'm not kidding when I say this. It bothers me because anybody that knows what it's like to serve in any capacity for people, you know what I'm talking about. I will jump on harm's way to save your life regardless of what your political views are, regardless of what hate you have towards me. I will do that. That's called service. Service before self. And I have to tell you, those who know, know. Chaplain, I know you know in the very back there, you know what it's like to serve as well. And, and I just commend those people that just give people a chance to show their good side to you. Don't just hate. There's people trying to recall us, and I'm like, no valid points, none whatsoever. Off a petitioner that has no valid points, those are all made up. Those are things that I'm like, discount, discount, discount. Those aren't recallable offenses. People voted us in. Let us serve our term, like Mr. Depper said, you know? You voted them in. If you don't like it, step up to, to run next term. I never said I was gonna do this, ever. But I stepped up. Why? Because I love my community. I love you guys. I love our community. I don't like this, 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 the way we're going. I don't. I just said, where's the love again? I will talk to any one of you guys. You guys may hate me, and for whatever reason, I don't like to use the word hate. I hate that word. Dislike. And what I mean by that, we need to come together, and I wish we could do that more often. And I hope that we can unite Josephine County. Mr. Spurlock, I think you had a couple of questions. I'm trying to answer a couple. We, we let you guys go a little longer today. There's a lease until 2025, okay? That is there. Nobody evicted the library, yeah, of this year, December 31, 2025, okay? And if you've been paying attention, which I don't get, where people don't get the memo, I know there's a lot of people talking about it, come to the source if you want the information about what's going on with the library. Been working for months, working with Ms. Lasky, trying to show you guys that we can come together to balance this. We came up with a solution. Library's gonna pay their fair share, is what one side wanted. The other side wanted it for free. We came to a happy medium. It's called negotiations. And I'm working on that. So one of the things on the recall that I voted to terminate the lease, yes, we all voted. But I have to tell you, that doesn't mean what you think because the next day I went out saying, no, we're not evicting the library. We're not, we're not doing that. So you're gonna have some faith and trust, and if I don't deliver, then you can say that. But I'm the one that's trying to make the library feel comfortable. And I'm also trying to make people that don't like the library, for whatever reason, comfortable. I think the library is a community service. I've never went on the record saying I didn't like the library. I was just there. I was there at 8:30 this morning, meeting with Ms. Lasky, seeing all the good things that go on in there. It, it's what you guys want, and we're gonna continue to work on that, so have patience. Please have patience. We're getting there. We're this close. Something good is gonna happen, but just be patient on that. I just want to let everybody know, it's a broken record. I'm, I'm done, man. I've been working really hard on that, and I will continue to broker on what I worked on so hard. We're working on partnerships. We don't have a partnership with the library, then we're not, we're gonna have more discontent. We're gonna have more people riled up. I don't want that. Doesn't matter if you like it or not. Our community partner, let's just try to work with them. Yeah, I go in there and check on the books. I go in there and check to see if there's homeless in there. I go in there. Why? Because I'm a library card holder. And if there's a problem, you tell the staff. And I don't know if you know, but they have security over there now. Why? Because they are seeing exactly what we have to deal with in front of our office and the other administrative offices. It makes people feel uncomfortable. It makes people feel like there's something going on, illegal activity. So the library did get security. I commend them for actually getting that. I know our security, Josh in the back, does a great job. He was doing this on his own. He, he, he's hired by us, but he patrols that parking lot because that is a county building, right? We have no obligation to do security over there. But our security is doing it because we'd say, if you see something, say something. That's what you're supposed to do. This is my jurisdiction. Don't do this. Don't do that. If I see something, I will go ahead and defend it. But we all need to come together, and I really hope we do. Jill, I hope I answered some of your questions. We're working on the library stuff, okay? Trust me, we are. And from day one after January 6, which seems to be the day that everybody remembers, that everybody forgets that we went on the record saying, we're gonna work through this, okay? And I think people forget that. So I'm not your enemy. I'm actually champion to try to work something that's agreeable between the parties. Let's do that, okay? And Patrick, arguing doesn't help. You're right. Solutions is what we want. The division needs to stop. I'm tired of the division. Tired of it. All we hear is the same old rhetoric. You have a solution? Come on up, and what's a compromise? I, I put out compromises. Nobody wants to hear it. That's a roadblock. That doesn't get anybody anywhere. Doesn't get anybody anywhere. If you're just gonna be stuck in your way, and you're gonna hate, and you're gonna have this, well, then you need Jesus or something. I don't know what to tell you. You need to have a moment with yourself. Why are we acting like this as individuals and people when we're human beings to live together in a community in a county that I love? I don't hate it here. I love it here. That's why I stood up to do this job. Do you think this is for power? You think this is for weird stuff? We don't affect your life individually at all. Stop it. We're here to run the county operations that serve you. Management has been not there. Management is going on now. Some people don't like it. When the cat's around, the mice, the cat's gone, the mice will play. You've heard that term? I've learned that in the military. We're a big organization. And when we come around to do spot inspections, everybody freaks out. What are you doing here? Well, we can't be here. We're doing that now for you, the taxpayers, accountability, to show what's really going on. It's unfortunate. Some people aren't employed with the county anymore. It's unfortunate. But they don't affect your daily life, so stop it. They don't affect your daily life. The only people that are sticking up for those people that lost their job are their friends. The general public has no idea who you are. If things are working fine in the county, guess what? We're doing our job. We're doing our job. You got everything. If there's something that you're wanting that we took away, then tell us about it. Tell us in advance so we can hear you. And that's what this job is exciting about. This job sucks for all the politics stuff. I can tell you that. I would tell nobody to do this. But we need good people to stand up because if you don't get good people to stand up, to raise their hand like we did, you're gonna get what you get. And everybody's gonna complain, but nobody recalls them because they don't do anything. They go quiet for four years. I don't even know who that person is, but I know who they are. Checkmark. Why do I say that? It's because every time people know who they are. Checkmark. Why do I say that? It's because every time people run for offices, I always know, have I heard of them? Do they do anything? And some people just by default check the box. And I go, you guys elected us in. Please let us do our job. I'm excited. All the accomplishments we've done in a short amount of time. If you want to see all the accomplishments we've done, we publish them. And some of you disagree. Oh, no. You guys have no idea what this job is then. You have no idea what this job is. Follow me around for a day and job shadow me. You can have my phone. You can have my email. You can have my office. You will know that we're working our butts off. Please do not underestimate what this position and job is because these people voted us in. We want to do a good job and get out. Some of us will stay and say, I like it enough to finish up what I started. But for the most part, this is a temporary position, not 20-year guaranteed, like some employees want. This is a temporary oversight position for you, the people, to make sure there's checks and balances. That's all. This isn't favoritism. There's some good people that work for this county, and I will stand up for them any day. But if there's bad eggs, you won't ever know. Just know that. But anyway, I just want to say unify and not divide. That's all I have, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. A couple of responses. First of all, thank you for taking the opportunity to use all five minutes for those of you that did. As I look around the room right here, I see quite a few people that are interested and engaged in community business. But I see out of, I believe there's about 25 or 27 of you out there, only four of you, only four of you have ever come to my office to talk to me about your concerns. Of those four people, my hat's off to you, Mr. Finch. You're one of those four, and I appreciate you coming down to my office and talking to me about your concerns. I'd very much like to make you a happy citizen, but I just don't know exactly how I can do that, but I'm still willing to talk to you about that. Mr. Pelfrey, concerns about the non-law-abiding citizens here in the city. I want to let you know that I have been contacted by people at the city, councilors, and they have a proposal, and I'm talking to them about it. I don't want to get any specifics, but it looks like it could be promising towards a solution. Not making any promises, but I'm working on it, as are all of us. We're working on it. And all I can say is it looks interesting and intriguing. So hang on, hang tight. We want to solve this as much as anybody else does. We live and we work here, and we want what's best for our community. Mr. Hunker, I wanted to respond to you. You come here quite regularly with a clever verse that you've crafted the night or the week or the month before, and you always harass me, harass me, harass me. Remember that time you came to my office and we tried to solve some problems? Oh, that's right. You've never come to me. You've never made an effort to reach out to me to talk about what's concerning you. Mr. Spurlock, you asked some questions, and you said there were only going to be a few. I tried to write them down as fast as I can, so here we go. As far as I know, the library lease has not been terminated. The lease is still in effect until December 31st of this year. Grants are being taken care of. We have full trust in all the people that work for this county. There's concern that you stated that you had no confidence in the previous directors and that their ability to train the people that work for them to handle the work and continue on with the responsibilities. I assure you that we have a good team here in Josephine County working for all of us. You asked about a Mr. Sellers, who works for Josephine County. His title, as far as I know, is IT and emergency management. I do not know his salary off the top of my head, so I cannot quote it to you because I may be off by a dollar or two and then be accused of lying. So I'm not going to say that. But it is available online. You can see it on our website. Yes, the library is mentioned, correction, three times in the charter. We are abiding by the charter. You asked, where is the main library? I'm pretty sure it's at 200 Northwest C Street, and that's the building just adjacent to us here, to the west. You asked a question about the Dimic property. The Dimic property is a liability. We do owe money on it, and the longer we keep that on the books, the greater the liability is. So it is our responsibility to mitigate or remove any liabilities that the county has, and that's what we're trying to do. And with that, I believe I did not answer all your questions, and just like I invite everybody else here, come down to my office. I'm more than happy to talk to you about your concerns, all right? Coming here every week and just pounding your fist and gnashing your teeth, it's not going to get us anywhere. So let's be productive. The, oh, I want to make it very clear that this board, and I think I can speak for all of us, we're not against the library. This notion that we're against the library, we're not against the library. We're for everyone. You just have to understand that. There was a comment about yelling at each other. Yes, I agree. There's no point in yelling at each other. We're not getting anywhere. Civil discourse is the best. And again, my open invitation to anybody who wants to discuss their concerns, give me a call. Reach out to me. I'm more than happy to. And in closing, I would just like to shout out a thanks to all those that have supported us for having an invocation that began this meeting and every meeting for the weekly business session, to those that have reached out to us and given us a support and a nod. I appreciate that support very much. And with that, I'll bring it back to the agenda. And the next item is number six. This is the approval of the consent calendar. These are the minutes of which the draft is available at the board's office. The general discussion dated September 15th. The general discussion dated September 17th, and the weekly business session dated September 18th. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve that consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is other matters, and this is where the commissioners may bring up other matters for consideration by the entire board. Commissioner Smith?
No, not really. Just encourage you to get involved in your local government. You know, you're not going to affect Washington DC. You're going to have a very small chance of affecting Salem. But you can get involved here in your local government. You can make a difference here. This is what it's all about. This is the government you can touch. This is the government you could talk to. That's why we're here. So I encourage you to come to our office, bring your concerns to us. That's why we're here. We're here to represent you. But if you don't talk to us, if you don't know what your needs are, if you don't talk to us, we can't represent you. Anyway, thank you for being involved, and thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, I just wanted to say I've got announcements. Can I go ahead?
Well, we're doing other matters now. We'll do announcements next.
So I have no board matters.
Okay, I do, I just want to bring up, this is in regards to the fires, is kind of an update. I know all three of us have been updated about both the Moon Complex and the Kelsey Peak. Fire crews are doing a fantastic job. We've got favorable weather coming next week with a little bit of rain, and that's great news. Right, with that, we'll move on to announcements. Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burnett?
Yeah, just wanted to say happy fall, everybody. My favorite time of year. It's kicked in. All the leaves are turning. I mean, it's something to be grateful about. Look how beautiful it is in Southern Oregon. So happy fall. Today, 2:30 to 5:30, the Elks in Grants Pass. If you haven't been there, hey, they're having a open house for first responders, police, fire, AMR. They just want to feed you some lunch and give you some drinks, and it's open to retirees as well. So that's going on from 2:30 to 5:30, 618 J Street. As Commissioner Black said, I just want to give kudos to our firefighters out there working hard. I went to the Grants Pass Airport last week. I do make spot visits all the time. You should see all the helicopters out there. I did post them. All the fire crews are out there. It's just amazing that this year, my wife was just talking to me this morning, how we're getting the fires out quick. I mean, you saw the one that was on board shanty quick. So we finally got the message to the state that we don't want our lanes to burn. You don't want to inhale the smoke. We don't want to see destruction in our forest. So we've really put that pressure on them. And I just have to say it's because we spoke up. So it's amazing. And those helicopter crews that are out there, that are fighting the fires with the firefighters and everything, all the water buckets, everything out there, just amazing to see them at the Grants Pass Airport. And you can go by there and see them all. It's pretty cool to see. So thank you for all that. And the Moon Complex is still going in the Agnes area, so you'll still see some smoke, but they're getting a handle on it. And then good news on the double slide cleanup. That's not even our property. County has really no jurisdiction there. We're doing a joint partnership with the city, the mayor and I and the city council. We're trying to clean up that area. It's on railroad property. It's an eyesore. It concerns citizens. We're doing a unified effort on that. That is not our responsibility. But this is how you come together to unify and work together. We're going to do that. The paperwork's going through. U-Turn for Christ, Park Watch as well has volunteered to step up to that, many other people as well. We'll give you a date on that. If you want to help out, pick out some trash, pick up some trash, we'll let you guys know on that. And then other than that, let's all come together, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I just want to point out, in terms of announcements, the county is looking at making some proposals for department fees, departments wanting to change and upgrade their fees. This is a fee change so that the county can charge the appropriate amount of money for the services that we provide. This is a process that happens, I believe, every, it happens every year. We've started that process with some proposals from the individual departments. And over the next four and five, six weeks, we'll be having meetings about those fees. And I encourage everybody who has an interest in seeing how that happens and having input in what those fees may be changed to. I invite you to participate. And I just say that, just keep an eye out on the county's calendar as to the specific dates of when that starts. So with that, I have nothing further, and it is exactly 11:01, everybody. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good day.